One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Gardner is absent. Mr. Kalin?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
He's here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mayor Bruke is absent. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's no validation of notice of special meeting. There's no adoption of meeting agenda. So we come first to the proclamations, and I would ask Councilmember Berry to read the proclamation on Watershed Awareness Month.
Okay. Whereas the streams and tributaries that flow both above and beyond below the ground through the city of Falls Church are part of an interconnected watershed system that carries water from our rooftops, yards, streets, and parking lots into the Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay. And whereas the city of Falls Church is committed to improving and protecting these precious waters as a habitat for plant and animal life, as a recreational resource, and as drinking water for our citizens both now and in the future. Whereas there are currently 213 commercial and residential properties in the Falls Church City portion of the trips-run and four-mile-run floodplains. And whereas the city is participating in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System, which recognizes and encourages community floodplain management, and through which flood insurance rates may be reduced to reflect the reduced flood risk resulting from community activities that meet targeted goals. And whereas the city provides opportunities to residents, businesses, schools, churches, and organizations to participate in watershed and floodplain education efforts. And whereas many citizens in our community have responded by participating in programs that serve to raise awareness about what individuals can do on their properties, in their homes, and through their transportation choices to improve water quality and minimize their impact on the floodplain. And whereas the city has undertaken a citywide comprehensive effort to examine our watershed and to develop a plan for improving the watershed over the next 10 years. And whereas the city of Falls Church recognizes the importance of increasing public awareness of watershed and floodplain protection.
Now therefore, I, David Snyder, Vice Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2012 as Watershed and Floodplain Awareness Month in the city of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of this observance and to participate in watershed and floodplain protection activities in our community. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 14th day of May 2012. And we have someone to receive this. Yes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for your time that you've spent thus far in stormwater and floodplain management in the last year. This is one of those core items that municipal governments engage in, and no matter where anyone lives in the watershed, whether they're high up or low in the floodplain, what we do has an impact on water quality and floodplain, and really impacts to personal property as well as to governmental tax rates. So thank you very much for your efforts to proclaim May Watershed Floodplain Awareness Month.
Thank you very much. Does any member of council have any comments? Okay, there being none, you want to come up and get the proclamation? Can you get a picture here for everybody?
And one more. All right. One, two, three. Thank you for your contribution.
Very much. I know the entire city is very committed to doing everything we can, both to reduce the stormwater and manage it after it is produced. Okay, the next proclamation, which I will read, is as follows. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Falls Church Police Department. And whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty. And whereas the names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty were honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 24th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of Sunday, May 13, 2012. And whereas a candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 13 through 19. And whereas May 15, 2012 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, David Snyder, Vice Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 13 through 19, 2012, as Police Week in the city of Falls Church, and ask all citizens to publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 14th day of May 2012. And we do have a representative of the police department here. Would you like to say a few words, please?
Yes, on behalf of the Chief of Police and the police department as a whole, I'd like to thank the council for their support always of the police department. It's certainly a special week for us in law enforcement, where we mourn and we also celebrate our profession, and we thank you for your continued support.
I know that the entire community thanks you for your service. It's one of the most important things that our government does, and you do it so very well, and you have our deep gratitude. Do any other members of council wish to make any comments? Yes, Councilmember Webb?
I just wanted to say thank you for all that you all do. Having a member of my family, my brother, being in law enforcement makes me have a very special place for what our police officers have done. And during my time on council, I've taken it upon myself to get to know some of the officers in the department, and they are very professional and do a wonderful job protecting our city. So I want to congratulate you all for this week.
Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
energy, efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affect our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these dedicated employees and professionals develop and implement the highest-quality codes to protect our citizens in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council, the Virginia Building Code Officials Association, and the Building Safety Division of the city of Falls Church. And whereas Building Safety Month, an international celebration of safe and sensible structures, the theme for Building Safety Month 2012 encourages all citizens to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, green and sustainable building, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2012 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure our buildings are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved by the implementation of safety codes.
Now therefore, I, David Snyder, Vice Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2012 as Building Safety Month in the city of Falls Church. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 14th day of May 2012. Yes, do we have someone who wants to speak to this? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council. We've -- it's been a very good year for the advancement of building safety in the city of Falls Church. We've had a number of buildings that have voluntarily installed sprinkler systems and fire alarms. We've got -- the State Theater has installed a sprinkler system. All of Oakwood's apartment buildings have installed fire alarms and sprinkler systems. Made quite a few advancements there. Looking forward, TJ School is proposing to sprinkler their existing school building as well as the new addition. 600 Roosevelt is considering sprinkler systems, and even City Hall is considering a sprinkler system. Also, with the help of Tom Polara, our Fire Marshal, a number of the existing older buildings in the city have been brought into compliance. In particular, Eden Center has made great advancements in its fire safety. So it's my hope that this -- we can keep this momentum going in the coming year, and I thank you all for your support.
Thank you very much. We had our lives saved once with a smoke detector, so there's absolutely nothing more important, frankly, than the kind of work that's being done here in terms of installing fire detection devices and sprinkler systems. So thank you for your work, and thank you for all those who have volunteered and worked with you to improve safety. Thank you. Do you want to come up and get the proclamation? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone to receive the oath of office to new board -- as a new board or commission member? Nothing? Okay. Next item on the agenda is receiving public comments. We'll lead tonight with a presentation from the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. So please come forward. I think I'm going to like this part of the agenda. I think we're all going to like it.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Michael Volpe, 314 West Columbia Street, and I am the president of the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, also known as VIPUS. As you know, and as the press release prepared by the city staff identifies, we have a long history of partnership and tradition of partnership with the city on a number of different projects, including gardens that are placed in public areas, summer concerts that we've -- we will have this year, our 20th anniversary of the summer concerts in the parks, street trees. We have been planting street trees with the city in a partnership since 2000. We have planted over 600 trees in the past 12 years. Received an award from the Virginia Municipal League for that effort. And when the city came to us and said that they wanted to improve the street landscaping along Rod Street, but they did not have enough money to complete the project in this current budget year, and they asked if we could help, we said yes. And so I'm here tonight to present, in a ceremonial fashion, a check in the amount of $10,000 from VIPUS to the city of Falls
Yeah, why don't you -- why don't you come up here? I definitely want this picture. And I want people to know that it's actually made out appropriately to the city of Falls Church.
Ben's going to join me up here, too.
Sure.
City office.
Everybody in? Okay. Big smiles.
All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thanks, Mayor. Really appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Before the members of VPIS leave, I'm sure council members might have something that they'd like to say about it. Anybody? Yes?
I will have to say, it was sort of my first introduction to the city of Falls Church. When we moved here eight years ago, we stopped by on a morning, and I believe it was in May, to check on the house as it was being finished. And there were all these people in our front yard planting a tree. We had no idea what was going on, and that's when we first heard about what went on. So it sort of let us know we were moving to a place that was a little bit different in that regard and a little bit special. And then we got a nice walk-around lecture about how the developer hadn't quite planted the trees right in the back either, and while we were at it, we got a few tips on how to make sure they survived, and they did. So that was our first introduction. I've been watching the good work since then, and I want to thank you for all the work.
I would concur, and whether it's -- when I think about the work that VIPUS does, whether it's the attic treasure sale, whether it's the Arbor Day, whether it's planting trees, whether it's the very moving and appropriate ceremonies that we have here in the council chambers on the Fourth of July every year. What an extraordinary group of volunteers, what an extraordinary group of folks who remind us what the heart of the city is really all about. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Before you leave, just a couple of comments. Other council members have expressed it very well, but to me, it's proof positive that dedication and hard work actually do pay off. We've seen that in the case of the schools this past week with their national ranking, and we see it day in and day out with the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. Councilmember Berry said you're heart -- you're the heart of our community, you're also our conscience as well. And it's appropriate that all the work that you do to maintain the quality of life and maintain our cultural and historic heritage is also being translated into money that will assist in creating the visual imagery that goes along with the community that you helped to build. So thank you all very, very much. Please pass on to all the volunteers how much we appreciate what they do for us. Thank you. All right. Next, we're receiving public comments on -- all the comments that I've received, that I have the slips for, were for a particular agenda item, and we'll get to your comments there. That is the water system issue. Does anyone member of the public wish to address us on any other issue? Okay, I don't see any. Summary of written comments. Madam Clerk?
Counsel, we received three comments regarding the PED Plan. The Pierces of 6568 Flagmaker Court opposed eliminating street parking on Hillwood Avenue for the bike lanes. Suzanne Updike of 300 Buxton Road was pleased about the attention that pedestrian and bicycle safety were receiving, but asked that a tree survey be done prior to installing sidewalks. She also suggested exploring alternative traffic calming measures and changing the leaf collection process. Michael Volpe, 314 West Columbia Street, opposed narrowing Little Falls Street and Maple Avenue to make them one-way -- to make them one-way streets due to the inconvenience and confusion the change could cause, especially for fire and rescue squads responding from Arlington or Fairfax. Other comments received, Ron Anzalone, the Chair of the Historical Commission, and Linda Valentino, the Chair of the Historic Architectural Review Board, supplied recommendations and comments from their respective boards regarding the North Washington Street Small Area Plan. They noted that a property in the Historic and Cultural Conservation Overlay District was misidentified, and that higher-density developments adjacent to historic districts were problematic. And Patty Stevens, the Executive Director of the Fairfax County Office of Public-Private Partnerships, thanked the city for contributing to the recent United Way campaign.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, report of the city manager and council. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder, members of council. There are just two things that I wanted to report on tonight, and the first is an update and potentially a discussion with the council on the next steps on the pedestrian plan. We have met with staff and also with Councilmember Berry to talk about basically restarting the process with the council's action last week to withdraw the plan in its current form so that we could go back to the drawing board and make substantive changes to the plan. So we are working through those changes, and specifically addressing the questions that have been raised about on-street parking, about the sidewalk policy in terms of the complete street policy for our collector and above streets, and substantive changes also on the process by which projects would ultimately be implemented in the future, and how decisions would be made. Those are sort of the top three of the areas of substantive changes that we're working on. There are others. Also, very importantly, we've put together a plan for engagement with the affected -- with the community as a whole, but with on-street meetings on Little Falls and Maple, on Hillwood Avenue, and on Lincoln Avenue. And we have some proposed dates for those, but we'll reach out to the residents on those streets to make sure that those dates are going to work and we can have a good attendance at those meetings. But the intent is to come back to the community with a review of the substantive changes to the plan and engage at the street level with residents to make sure that the communication is there, that we're -- that there's a good exchange of information, and that the plan is something that will work on that particular street. If there are additional streets where we need to have -- need to have this type of engagement, we'll schedule those as well. We would then wrap things up and bring it back to a City Hall community meeting, presumably in June, is what we're working towards, and then have a planning commission public hearing, likely in July, given the way -- given the scheduling, and then bring it back to council, potentially as early as July 23 for council adoption. But again, I think when the council set that June 21 date in your resolution of when to bring it -- I'm sorry, June 20 -- 25th date to bring it back in your motion two weeks ago, that there was some flexibility built in that. If we weren't ready, we would defer on that date until such time as it is ready. So currently, with the engagement process that we've laid out, we think probably the earliest it would come back to the council would be in July, and if we need more time, we will take it. So I'd be happy to take any council questions on that, and then I had one other thing to report on.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Berry, any particular comments?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I remember -- obviously, I remember being at the meeting, and I remember going through the schedule, but I'm confused about why it would be moving into July. I thought that we had worked through fairly aggressive outreach. Are you just -- I mean, is your sense, if it's just to give yourself a bit of breathing room? Because I would rather drive hard to the date rather than, you know, I mean, that would like to -- I'd like that to be the drop-dead date, that this is this council's business. But are you just being cautious, or why the --
Yeah, basically cautious. Knowing how these things go, in the past, we've built in some extra time. I agree completely. We would love to be able to really engage aggressively on this, but given the fact that we want to have these neighborhood meetings, I can anticipate there's going to be some give and take on dates. We do think it's necessary also to have a -- another town hall meeting where everybody comes together beyond the areas where we'll have the on-street meetings. And then the planning commission would have its final hearing as well. So in order to do all those things, I think that June date is going to be very tough to hit.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Thanks. Mr. City Manager?
Secondly, I wanted to give the council a report on last week's American Waterworks Association Utility Rodeo. And we are joined in the council chambers tonight is our team captain, Director of Operations, Robert Goff. Team captain, but he took an outstanding crew of our utility employees to Virginia Beach this year to participate in the annual utility rodeo, which is both a competition on basic -- on some water utility skill sets, but also an opportunity for seminars and learning and information sharing. I just want to call out our employees who did participate in Meter Madness Competition, which is assembling a meter and record time. Joe Cassell participated in that and came in fourth statewide. The Rapid Tapping Team of Josh Goff, Steve Schuman, and Sean Walters, they came in fourth also in that competition. And in the Splish Splash Competition, Josh Goff placed in that as well. Our guys competed very well. They do train on their own time, not on city time, and it does take a great deal of dedication to do that. We did beat, in all these competitions, our water utility neighbor directly to our west, which is always deeply satisfying to us. And -- but I think it was a very productive time in terms of learning and sharing information with our colleagues across the state, and some good fun as well. I also want to salute Brenda Creel, who, as Director of Utilities, has always supported our participation in this, and she traveled down to Virginia Beach for the conference and the rodeo as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If it's a sense of the council, I would ask the clerk to draft up a formal recognition and ask the employees to receive it at an upcoming meeting. I didn't hear anything about steer roping, so I guess it's another sort of rodeo that we had here. So -- but that's great. Congratulations to everyone involved, and we look forward to making a more formal expression of our appreciation for that work. Mr. City Manager, anything else? Any other questions for the city manager? Okay, there being none. Next item on the agenda, we turn now to resolutions and first readings of ordinances. I'll entertain a motion on the first item, which is a North Washington Street Small Area Plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move that action on TR 12-11, and the North Washington Street Small Area Plan be deferred to June 11, 2012, for a duly-advertised public hearing and final adoption.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, do you want to call a roll on that?
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is TO 12-11. Do you want to read that, please?
TO 12-11 is an ordinance authorizing the sale of city water utility assets and granting a 40-year easement for assets located on the city's public property.
Thanks very much. Now, members of the public, we're going to have some additional information presented by the city manager. Then we'll open the item to those who have submitted speaker slips, and anyone else who wants to speak on the item this evening. Then we'll close the public hearing and open it up for action by council and council discussion. So that's the way we'll be doing things this evening. Let me first make a couple opening comments. The city is taking necessary steps to consider selling its public water distribution system after a long and concerted effort by Fairfax County to drive the city out of providing water service in the county. The sale is not driven by financial stress in the city. The city of Falls Church is financially sound, maintaining high bond ratings and high-quality public services. The city is taking responsible steps to possibly divest its water utility assets, with appropriate protections for our customers and utility employees embedded in the agreement of sale if approved. The proceeds from the sale will be deployed to meet other core public needs. Those who are concerned about private ownership of water utility systems should encourage Fairfax Water to participate in the bidding process. As to water quality, the city's water system is a distribution system. Whoever purchases and operates the city water system in the future will continue to receive treated drinking water from the Washington Aqueduct operated by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps has a long track record of meeting or exceeding regulatory requirements for the water that we deliver to our customers. As to rates, rates will be frozen under the proposal for one year after the sale. If a private entity were to purchase and operate the water system, rates in the future would be regulated by the State Corporation Commission. Finally, the level of service. Water service is one of the most highly-regulated industries in the United States. The State Corporation Commission regulates the level of service for private water providers in Virginia. Now I'll turn it over to the city manager for some additional information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. I do have a number of slides that I think would be helpful for the community as a setup for the council's consideration of adopting this ordinance on first reading tonight. In short, the ordinance is before the city council in light of the fact that in recent years, the financial risks to the city to continue to operate the water system, those risks have increased markedly in recent years, and the ordinance is to allow the city to divest itself of its utility assets and deploy the proceeds of those -- of that divestiture to other critical public needs, including school capital costs and other needs. Tonight's presentation, I'll take time just to provide a system overview, which I think will be very useful for the community, about the city's water system. I'll discuss reasons for the sale that the council has been discussing over the past several months. And we'll talk about the bidding process that we're engaged in right now, and the schedule, and the public referendum that would ensue if the council were to adopt this ordinance on second reading, as is proposed tonight, to be scheduled for June 7. this ordinance on second reading, as is proposed tonight, to be scheduled for June 7th. And then after that, we can have questions and comments. First, as an overview, we do have the 13th largest water utility in the state of Virginia with 34,500 customer accounts. We provide this water service and people count on us for it, and it's obviously a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, and 365-day-a-year operation. The city's traditional service territory can be described as, as being bounded on the north by the Potomac River, on the east by the Arlington County Line, and on the west, it's bound by the Beltway for much of its length, with the exceptions in Tyson's Corner and in the Maryfield area, where the city extended water mains to enable the economic development to occur there in the, in the 60s. The city's distribution system, this is an inventory of some of the core assets that the city owns and operates in order to provide water service for our customers. Eight pump stations, 10 storage tanks, just under 500 miles of water main. This is where those assets are distributed throughout the system. We get our water from the Dale Carlia Treatment Plant, which is operated by the Army Corps of Engineers just over the Potomac River, and that comes to us via a 36-inch water main. And then at the Chainbridge Pump Station located in McLean, the water goes in two directions, generally speaking. One down Kirby Road, where it serves the eastern part of our service district, and one down Dolly Madison that serves the Tysons, and ultimately the Maryfield, and out to Fairfax City area of our service territory. Our source of water is the Army Corps of Engineers, where they operate the Washington Aqueduct. There are three wholesale customers, the City of Falls Church, Arlington County, and the District of Columbia. So this water source provides water service for the White House, for the Pentagon, for the core federal facilities, and is extremely reliable. We also have a great capacity with this treatment plant. Our, our capacity is 320 million gallons per day, and our peak demand day that occurred over a decade ago was 220 million gallons per, per day. Our source of water is the Potomac River, and we participate with all of the water utility systems along the Potomac River for, to manage the, the outtakes from the river with our low-flow agreements and other environmental measures that are in place. Within the city, we have capacity to meet growth in the Tysons area and the Maryfield. We've been a participant in the Tysons Task Force and the other planning efforts underway in Fairfax County, and we're ready to serve that growth. We've made significant investments in reliability over the past five years, about $30 million in total, much of which is geared towards our ability to serve that growth in Tysons and Maryfield, as I just mentioned, along with system renewal and meeting regulatory Financially speaking, the city's water system brings in about $20 million per year. Those are our annual operating revenues. We've, have $22 million in outstanding debt, financing the improvements that I just mentioned a slide ago, and we do maintain competitive rates at 327 per thousand gallons. We are below average for the region, although it is noteworthy that we, we have been studying our rates, and in 2011 have recommendations for a 24% increase in our water rates spread over three years, and we've implemented one year of those increases. We've suspended them for this year, but anticipate in the future that additional significant double-digit increases will be required by the city. But where we are right now in terms of regional rate comparison, as I said, we're below average for the region, but these are all the Northern Virginia, Maryland, and DC water systems, 17 of them, and we're ranked 12th in terms of our, of our cost for the customer. And this is based on 24,000 gallons per quarter, which is relatively high. That's a, that's a high metric of consumption, which could exaggerate the differential between the rates somewhat, but it's a, it's a metric that's used in the industry. Our staffing levels, we have 55 highly trained, highly professional employees that maintain our system and, and keep the water moving to our customers at all times of the day and, and repairing water main breaks when they occur, no matter what time of day they occur. These employees, as we discuss in a moment about the bidding process, one of the provisions we have in the agreement is, is a guarantee of employment for at least one year for the employees, and that's critical for customer service. These are the folks who built the system and know how to run it and know how to maintain reliable service for our customers. So now we'll discuss some of the reasons for the sale. As I noted at the outside of this presentation, there are operational and financial risks that have increased for the city over the, in, in recent years, and those are legal and, and political in nature, and they've harmed the city's ability to continue to serve county customers. At the same time, we know from our, our recent valuation of the system and from our solicitation of, of interest and, and from the utility industry, that there is substantial fair market value for the system. We have interested buyers who are participating in the bidding process as we speak. Some of those legal obstacles, a court decision in January of 2010, which overturned the city's charter provisions, which explicitly authorized the city council to transfer or return on equity from the water fund to the general fund, and that's a measure that's very typical for municipally-owned utilities across the state of Virginia and across the country, and, and it's there in place to allow the taxpayers that are backing the debt for the water system to earn a reasonable rate of return for those risks incurred. The city, just as an example, we have $22 million of general obligation debt backed by the taxpayers of the city, not by our ratepayers, and that's what that was for. But that, that charter provision was overturned in January 2010, so the city is no longer able to have a return on equity. In addition to that, political obstacles have been placed in the city's path. In December of 2011, the Fairfax County Board adopted an ordinance that would purport to regulate the city council's ability to set rates for our customers and, and put in its place an arbitrary basis that is not cost-based, the effect of which would potentially have the city required to sell water at below cost. There are lawsuits pending by the City of Fairfax, by the Town of Vienna, and by the City of Falls Church. However, if the county does prevail in its view on this ordinance, we've calculated that the Falls Church water system could lose as much as $5 million per year if you take, if you take the Fairfax water rates and impose them on air cost structure. Another critical political obstacle that we're dealing with is the anti-competitive ordinance that would mandate new development to hook up to Fairfax Water. We had worked out an agreement with Fairfax Water for free and full competition in our interface areas. That was the ordinance, which also is under litigation, would overturn that agreement and mandate that developers hook up with Fairfax Water. The effect of that is that we've made investments to provide service for growth in Tysons and Maryfield. Those costs and those investments would be stranded and be borne by our, our existing customers, putting upward pressure on rates, and again, litigation is pending on this We'll talk about the bidding process. Before initiating a solicitation for bids, the city council issued a request for expressions of interest from, from the water industry, and that was on February 13th, and we received responses from all the major investor-owned utilities and from two public water agencies, one in, in the region. We learned from this, got a lot of information about various options for the city to consider going forward, and we also learned that there was strong interest in the marketplace for acquiring the city's water system. The city council authorized the solicitation of bids for the water system, and that was issued on April 11th. Bids will be due on May 25th. What is laid out in our bidding documents is an auction process so that we can establish what the full fair market value for the system is. That is a process that is set forth in state code and is laid out in, in the bidding documents that have post, been posted on the city's webpage. Since the issuance of the solicitation for bids, we've had a pre-bid meeting, and we've had really steady engagement from prospective bidders, answering questions, posting information on the city's electronic data room. But we had good attendance from six, six water entities that participated in the pre-bid meeting, and we've been engaging with them on, on getting ready for, for bid day on May 25th. The city council has set out a minimum acceptable bid of $44 million, and that's based on an independent appraisal conducted by the firm of SAIC. That appraisal also is, is public information. We've set forward an agreement of sale, and that establishes the terms and conditions by which the city would sell the system. And I'll list what some of the key provisions of that agreement are. The point of it is, is that on bid opening day, what we will see is, is a number for the system, because the city has set forward all of the terms, and those are standard terms by which any purchaser would need to comply. So some of the key terms in the agreement, we do have a provision for a rate freeze for a minimum of one year. After that period of time, rates would be regulated by the Virginia State Corporation Commission. There's a requirement, as I mentioned earlier, of an offer of employment for all city water utility employees for a minimum of one year. There's a guarantee of uniform rates for city and county customers. The purchaser must maintain a local payment location for the convenience of our, of our customers. The purchaser must also meet twice, twice yearly with a local advisory board. Their formal regulator, if it is an investor-owned utility that, that acquires the system, would be the State Corporation Commission. Whether it's a public agency or an investor-owned utility, there is a local advisory board that would, that would meet with, with the purchaser twice a year to discuss service level issues, rates, any other complaints or issues that need to be resolved. With respect to the proceeds from the sale, as I mentioned, the minimum acceptable bid is $44 million. We do have obligations in the water system or in the water fund that total approximately $30 million, and those include defusing our existing debt and meeting our future pension obligations for our utility employees. The net proceeds would be invested in long-term public needs. One mechanism that we are working towards to maximize the public benefit from the proceeds of the sale is to invest it in the city's pension fund, and thereby reduce the city's actuarially required contribution, and use that reduction to be able to in turn make larger investments in critical facilities, including school capital facilities that we have in our, in our capital plan. Rates in the future, if, if it's, if the, if a private entity purchases a system, those rates would be regulated by the State Corporation Commission. If it's public ownership, rates would be set by that agency board. In either case, it's, it's through a public process with, with public hearings and, and a rigorous methodology. The schedule that's set forth is for bid opening on May 25th. We're scheduling a council action to authorize the execution of the agreement, and that council action is scheduled for June 7th, 2012. That action would require a three-fourth majority, i.e. six votes of the city council, and that authorization would be, or the, the execution of the agreement would be contention upon State Corporation Commission approval of the sale, if applicable, and it would only be applicable if it's a private entity that purchases it, and it would be contention upon city voter approval, which we would work towards having on the general election on November 6, 2012. By city charter, the sale or disposition of our utility assets requires voter approval at a general election. So in summary, we do have a very well-run and well-maintained water utility. Increasing financial risks have caused the council and staff to work together to evaluate the best options for our customers and for the city taxpayers for the future of our water system, and the decision has been made to solicit bids in a process that is open, fair, and competitive, and then to deploy the proceeds of such a sale to meet other critical public needs. So this ordinance is one step in that process. Again, it's just for first reading tonight. Between first reading and the scheduled second reading on June 7th, we will have the bid opening on mid, and, and the auction process on May 25th, and then the evaluation of the bids would proceed immediately after that. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Very much, Mr. City Manager. Does any, my, council have any questions at this point? Yes, Councilmember Berry.
Wyatt, could you flip back to the, the rate, the water rates by municipalities? I just wanted to get a sense of why the rather, why the rather significant swing in a municipality like Manassas Park versus, is it just economy of scale, Fairfax Water? I mean, it's, it's, or, or even Manassas versus City of Falls Church? What's the, what are the factors that?
It can be source of supply, economies of scale. Those are two big drivers. I would note, however, that water amongst all the utilities, whether it's natural gas, electric, telecom, sewer, water is generally the lowest-cost utility of, of the major utilities, and so each of these relative to those other utilities tends, tends to be a smaller bill than what you experience. And one of the things that I think municipal systems are experiencing across the country is there has been a historic underspending in terms of maintenance and infrastructure, and so a lot of municipal systems across the country are saying, who can do the job best to make sure that the infrastructure turnover that we need to have over the next 20 years, can the municipality do it best? Can a private entity do it best? Can a regional authority do it best? These types of questions are being debated across the country right now. But with this spread, it's generally economies of scale and source of supply.
Then I had a second question.
Thank you, please.
Yeah. And the second question is, when we, when we're talking about the, the employees of the water utility here, these, were these employees also recipients of the 5.5% salary increase as city employees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager at this point?
Okay, there being none. We will open this item to the public, and this is a public hearing. I've received some speaker slips. We would ask that all speakers limit their comments to three minutes, and I'll call two names, and the first person, please come up, and the second person, please be ready to speak at that time. And I would ask that each speaker, when they approach the microphone, to identify themselves and indicate their, their address. Thanks very much. The city clerk will be the enforcer here, and you'll hear her, her timer go off when the three minutes has expired. Want to welcome everyone. I thank you for taking time out for, for expressing your views this evening. First speaker slip I have is Kate Anderson, and then the second speaker will be Ms. Diana Artemis.
My name's Kate Anderson. I live at 500 North Roosevelt Boulevard in the City of Falls Church. Unlike a lot of the people here from, for local ownership of water, I actually do reside in the City of Falls Church, so you all work for me. Thank you very much. And I just, I don't have a lot to say. I just want to say I am very concerned about the sale of the Falls Church City water system to any private entity. It concerns me greatly, and I stand with flow on this issue, and I hope that you all will consider this very, very carefully as you go towards the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Next person is Ms. Diana Artemis, and following her is Miranda Carter.
Thank you. I live at 2930 Marshall Street in Falls Church, Fairfax County. Mr. [inaudible]? Mr. Vice Mayor and city council members, thank you for the work that you do. I've been a resident of Falls Church for 27 years now. I'm also a veteran, and I'm very proud to live just right across the boundary with my City of Falls Church neighbors. As a progressive city, you're a model city throughout the entire country, and I was shocked to hear that you were thinking of privatizing public water. As a model community, as a progressive community in the United States, I hope you reconsider. We look at what's happening in our U.S. Congress with the talk of privatizing everything from social security to schools to police departments to fire departments, and the consequences of that and the gridlock that we face. I ask you, I know emotions are high. I know there have been heated, horrible words between the city and the county of Fairfax, but I ask you to please reconsider. Don't let this happen on your watch. You talk about sustainability, and I put to you that this is not sustainable in the long term. Please, please, don't leave this legacy to your children that you have privatized, you have outsourced water. It's something that will be very difficult to turn back from. Please don't let this happen on your watch. I believe the people who will talk after me will give you many facts and statistics about what privatization of water means. Please don't let emotions ruin the future for your children and for the younger people coming up. I beg you to please review the facts and to find another way of saving money, and please keep water in public hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Miranda Carter, and then following her, Kirk Randall.
Hello. Thanks so much for having us. My name's Miranda Carter. I live in Washington, D.C. I'm the Virginia Organizer for Food and Water Watch. We work to protect our food and water from corporate abuse and keep our shared resources under public control. So I sent each of you a packet of information with some research. I hope that everything I say is not news to you. We have been following water industry trends for over a decade and have done extensive research on the benefits of publicly-owned water. So I'll give you some specifics. Most communities that experiment with privatization have found that it often results in worse service at a higher cost. First, private water systems are more expensive to run. Private financing is more expensive than public financing. For example, private bonds are about 25% costlier than municipal bonds, and private utilities pay income, property, and other taxes, while public systems pay no local or state property taxes. Our research also shows that taking over a municipal water system, private water companies aggressively hike water rates by an average of about 10% a year, adding hundreds of dollars onto the typical annual household budget. So this rate increase would likely happen right after the year freeze on rates. Also, private utilities also usually seek at least a 10% profit on their investment. In total, corporate profits, dividends, taxes, and financing adds about 20% to 30% in operation and maintenance costs that the community will pay for. Second, corporations also tend to cut costs to increase their profit. In many cases, this means cutting jobs, reducing benefits, and using shoddy construction materials that don't hold up over time. Eventually, this can lead to worsened water quality. Similar to the rates, there's only a year freeze for job and pay. Thirdly, private water companies often prioritize the needs of their stockholders over the needs of the communities they serve. While corporations squeeze money to send to their international stockholders, municipalities keep revenues in the local economy by using surpluses to reduce rates for its residents or to offer better compensation packages to the employees. Lastly, water companies are not accountable to the public. Under Virginia law, future decisions about the city's water system would no longer be made by Falls Church City Council, but by the private company and the state agency, the State Corporation Commission located in Richmond. As we've seen in other cities in Virginia, the State Corporation Commission approves the vast majority of rate requests, rate increase requests. There's clearly a reason why almost 90% of Americans receive their water from public utilities. I understand that you are all backed up against a wall, or that you feel like you're backed up against a wall, but privatization is really not the answer. Please vote against a private sale and instead seek alternatives that will ensure safe, affordable water today and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker slip I have is from Kirk Randall, followed by Ryan Scarborough. Welcome, Mr. Randall.
Kirk Randall, 1823 Deer Drive in McLean. In June, you will consider four options for the future of your water system. Sell it to a for-private utility, create a new standalone water utility, continue to operate it as before, or combine your system with Fairfax Water. Before any for-profit utility can acquire your system, it must be 100% certain that it may legally assume your water purchase agreement with the Corps of Engineers. You assert that it is the Corps' legal opinion that the 1947 federal legislation permits a for-profit utility to purchase water from the Washington Aqueduct, but the Corps' conclusions lie in a confidential, internal document that they won't share with bidders. It doesn't matter, anyway. If you sell the agreement to a for-profit utility, you and they will certainly be sued by Fairfax County and Fairfax Water. The case could take years and hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees to resolve. Creating a new water authority might work. Again, Fairfax County would have to approve the deal, and should Fairfax County disapprove, it'll sue. You could decide to keep the water system for yourselves. However, you are now subject to rate regulation by Fairfax County, and true to form, you've already sued them. Each of these options will tie you and the successful bidder up in litigation for years. And with outside counsel charging more than $500 an hour, your legal expenses and those of Fairfax County, Fairfax Water, and the waiting bidder could easily top $1 million. You currently have an unlimited budget for legal expenses because you force your customers to pay them through their water bills. In the legal proceedings to come, I encourage Fairfax County and Fairfax Water to ask the judges that, when you lose in court, you reimburse them for legal expenses. I will also encourage them to ask the judges to specify that your refunds must be made from the city's general fund, not the water fund, and that the city's own legal fees be paid from the city's general fund. After all, if your intention is to extract the maximum profit by selling your water customers to the highest bidder, it's only fair that you pay your own legal expenses in pursuit of that goal. Last but not least, you could do a deal with Fairfax Water. You can merge systems, or you can sell all or part of your system to Fairfax Water. This option incurs the least risk and will be the least costly to all of your customers. A deal with Fairfax Water could be done in a matter of months, not years. In conclusion, I think you will be disappointed with the auction. Given the legal and regulatory hurdles, the smart companies are not even going to bid. When the dust settles, you and Fairfax Water need to make nice with one another and cut a deal that is in the best interest of your customers. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ryan Scarborough, and then Letitia A. Norrie.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ryan Scarborough. I live at 7277 Highland Estates Place, just across the border from the City of Falls Church. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Kalin at the farmer's market, Mr. Schneider outside as well, but I haven't had a chance to speak with all of you, and this is an opportunity in this forum to at least share my preliminary thoughts. I may try to reach out to you individually afterwards. I'm here as part of a local group that we have created in response to the proposed effort to potentially sell the Falls Church water system. The group is called FLOW. We named it that to stand for local ownership of water. And I understand, because I've been following this issue for a long time, that there is a lot of backstory and history with regard to the county versus the city. But when it comes to selling a water system and potentially privatizing it, with all due respect, this is not a city versus a county issue. This is something that affects everybody equally, both city and county residents. In the short term, the city very well might see a short-term increase in profit from the sale, but as Mr. Snyder said at the beginning of this meeting, this sale isn't being driven by any sort of financial distress that the city is facing at this point. The reality is that the long-term consequences of a sale to a private bidder are far more significant and in fact impact both city and county. Rates will almost certainly go up, and they'll go up repeatedly as the profit-driven private bidder tries to recover its cost and make its profit, as Ms. Carter addressed earlier. In addition, we will find that accountability will be lost. Instead of decisions being made here locally, decisions will be made outside the city and maybe even outside the state. And we will find that the money that is paid for the water will also no longer be in our community. Instead of the money being paid to the City of Falls Church and spent here, the money is going to be transferred out to outside the city and possibly even outside the state and will not be the same benefit that we have here. The reality is that this is a time when I call on you not to focus on a short-term profit-maximizing goal of looking at this asset and seeing what's the highest price you can get, but to focus on the long-term best interests of the public, both the city residents and the rate payers who live in the county. And really, that's the difference between government and private sector. I ask you to put the interests of the public first. In short, I'm asking you to govern, and that means making the difficult choice to step back, realize that the dispute with the county is something that obviously you feel strongly about, but to step back and say, is this really the right decision for both the city and county residents who use the system? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker slip is from Letitia A. Norrie. I think I have that right. Am I pronouncing your name right?
Letitia Endry.
I'm sorry?
Endry, Letitia Endry.
Oh, Endry, okay. I'm sorry. And then the next speaker is Cynthia Lee. Yes, please, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Letitia Endry, and I'm an intern at Food and Water Watch. And as an intern, part of my job is to conduct research on the issues that we're working on. And as you know, right now, we're working on privatization in Falls Church. And as the selling process is moving really fast, I just want you to know the recent issues related to the water privatization in Virginia. And not far from here, about 75 miles from this current location, residents in Lakeland or in Madison, Virginia, are fighting a 10% rate hike by Aqua America, which is a private company that provides water services. This is their second rate hike in just three years, and this company has expressed interest in buying the Virginia water system. Residents from Lindor are not pleased about this rate hike, and they're trying to oppose it, but there is not much they can do because the decision is made by a state agency in Richmond. A resident has even resorted to putting up a sign in his yard warning potential home buyers about the high water bills that they're paying, which is between $130 and $200 a month, and this price is higher than his electric bill. Again, this is one of the many examples showing that privatization increases rates and does not benefit the public. I would like to urge you to please keep the City of Falls Church water system in public hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker slip is from Cynthia Lee. Welcome.
Thank you so much, and thank you for letting us voice our concerns. My name is Cynthia Lee, and I live at 7277 Highland Estates Place. My family and I have been a customer of City of Falls Church Water for the past 11 years. And I am very concerned regarding the sale of the system, and I am speaking on behalf of my community. And we are asking you to please keep the long-term sustainability of our most absolutely precious resource at the forefront of your decision-making and not to be driven by short-term profits. Please do not privatize. There are many, many examples of cities and local communities who have really come to regret privatizing their water systems, and I have a couple of examples. In North Brunswick, New Jersey, in 1996, North Brunswick sold its water system for $23 million to U.S. Water under a 20-year contract. The company agreed to pay the town a $6 million upfront fee, which the residents later paid for through rate hikes. Some households saw their bills double or even triple, and after 10 years, the town decided to terminate the contract, and they paid a $400,000 termination fee. Chattanooga, Tennessee, the private water company wants to raise overall rates by 30.5% to generate an additional $11.6 million. City leaders and business managers criticized the utility for trying to hike water rates again while local consumers and businesses are still struggling to recover from the recession. Fairbanks, Alaska, the city rushed the selling process and sold its water system for $20 million, and four years later, 182,000 gallons of waste spewed into a hotel basement due to maintenance failure and created huge damages. The company and town agreed that the investors would wait five years before they could start collecting profits. As soon as the period ended in 2002, the water and sewer rates jumped by $12 a month, and the company pocketed a 12.4% return on the system. In 2005, the company increased rates again by 16.6% for water and 11.3% for sewer service. It became an issue for everyone, especially for people living on fixed incomes such as retirees. These are just a few specific examples of the negative impacts of privatization. So I am asking you to please consider a sustainable option and solution. I don't plan on leaving here. I love this community. I appreciate all that you have done to give us a progressive community, and we enjoy it every day, but please think of the long-term sustainability of our water resource. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker slip I have is from Robert Lajenesse. Robert?
Hi, I'm Robert Lajenesse, 409 South Virginia Avenue. I would like to note that the city manager's presentation said nothing about survey or polling of customers or city voters, and if the ultimate decision about any liquidation or privatization of the system, of the delivery system, is going to ultimately rest with the voters, I would think that this whole process should be driven by the views of those voters or some sort of survey that was taking place, that had taken place rather than a dispute over a reasonable return on the financial risk. And we've just come through a budget process in which we were told that we have very limited city resources, and now the city has had to devote its attention and its employees to this process of potentially a private sale, which most people in the city that I speak to would be vehemently opposed to. And so I think that some consensus-taking or building needs to take place. I encourage you to put this whole discussion, a matorium on this whole discussion until at least the next council can get seated and you can get feedback from the community if they'd even be willing to first liquidate the system, and then if the private option is still on the table, if voters are interested in that. So I would encourage you to back up and start from collecting a consensus from the people who the decision will ultimately rest with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the speaker slips I had. Does anyone else wish to address us on this item? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Now, I'd ask the city clerk, we've received a lot of correspondence on this, a lot of emails. I think it's safe to say the council has read in each and every one of them. Do you have anything else in writing that you wish to summarize at this point? Okay. All right. So the public hearing has been closed. I want to thank again everyone who took their time to be with us to raise very, very significant issues and issues which we'll be wrestling with. Now, to begin our discussion amongst council, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I would like to make a motion. I would move that the council adopt TO 12-11 on first reading, schedule second reading, a public hearing for a meeting on June 7th, 2012, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We got a second from Councilmember Kalin and also Councilmember Webb. Thank you. And Councilmember Barry, I think. Nope? Okay. Thanks very much. All right, council, discussion. Questions?
Well, I guess since I made the motion, I'll speak. It's interesting. I appreciate everybody's coming out here, and we... It's interesting, I appreciate everybody's coming out here and we've, we've read all the emails that we got, and this isn't the first meeting we've had on this. We've had meeting after meeting after meeting since I've been on the council now for, for two years. So, so there's a lot of information out there, and I, and I understand there are not only different opinions on this topic, there are differing versions of the facts and interpretations as well. So our job as a council is to try and sort through that and figure out what to do. What struck me the most were the comments I heard about making a decision in the long-term interest of the community, and that's exactly how I'm approaching this and I suspect the other council members are. And ultimately, that comes down to deciding what is the best thing to do in the long-term interest of the Falls Church community as well as for the rest of the customers of the water system. And when you look at all the situation, and this is just my personal opinion from what I've been able to gather, the current situation's not sustainable either way, for whatever reasons. I got here after a lot of this started, but for, between the legal things and some of the other things, certainly something's going to have to give. There, there's no free choice, but a choice has to be made and they all have different pros and cons. After weighing all that out, it still appears to me that the best choice is to proceed with the bidding and then we evaluate the bids and then we will have a decision on June 7 about whether to proceed, and then the community still gets to weigh in as well. And there's probably going to have to be a lot more education in the mean sign. I don't have any particular, I understand the argument, some people say service hurts this way, there's arguments the other way saying you get better service if it's sustainable. The rates aren't going to stay the same no matter what, and, and as the city manager pointed out, many communities, the reason you get in a problem is the rates right now are determined rather politically. They're determined by a council. Frankly, I, as a customer, I would rather have a regulated entity that's determined by standard industry valuations than a political decision that gets made every couple of years, sort of like the VRS system, about where people think the rates are to be. But that's just my personal opinion. I know there's some differences of opinion on that. I don't have any personal bias against privatization. It sure worked on the trash pickup compared to some other things. So I, but I understand there are arguments for and against, and some people have different value systems that think the government should be more involved in these things. So for those reasons, I'm going to support the motion, but certainly everybody has to make up their own mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Pepe. Other comments? Councilmember Kaylin?
Thank you all for coming. I do have a, a sort of an informational question. Have you, has anyone who spoke here today spoken to the County Board of Supervisors in Fairfax or the Water Authority and asked them to see what they could do to meet us halfway, to put in a bid for the system or anything? Has anybody approached that side of the equation or has the, let me just ask that question, has anybody done that?
I spoke to them. I had a conversation with them. I didn't ask them specifically to mediate with you all. I wanted the impression they are going to give a bid. I expressed interest.
I'm unaware. Are they putting in a bid?
Fairfax Water responded to the city's request for expressions of interest, and they participated in the city's pre-bid meeting. We'll know on May 25 whether they submit a bid or not.
Councilmember Kaylin, anything else?
I'll let others go, I have some other stuff.
Okay, sure. Anyone else? Yes. Councilmember Webb, were you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Barry? Sure.
I did want to thank, again, thank you all for, for being here. I did want to assure everyone concerned about this, this particular issue, that in addition to the financial issues that, that we're discussing and long-term benefit of this system, both to City of Falls Church residents and, and Falls Church customers, the issue of water safety has never been in question in this system. This system is extraordinarily well-run. The, the safety of our water is absolutely preeminent in all of our discussions, and at no time, either now or in the future, do I expect that there'll be any diminution of, of water quality. And so I'd sort of, you know, I, to the extent that I can assure anybody about this, it is utmost in our own thinking, and I think we have, we have more than just goodwill behind us. We have a history of excellent water service. I'm looking at water staff, you know, in, in this room, excellent water service, a commitment to, to safe water, and at no time would this council, I am, I feel quite certain that I speak for this council, would compromise water safety and water quality.
Thank you. Councilmember Webb?
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out this evening. This has been one of the main issues since my time coming onto council four years ago, and it is a topic that we have talked about on numerous fronts via public as well as many conversations that we had in closed session. And ultimately, I think the decision to, that we are coming to, to have expressions of interest in this bid process, I think is the right direction to go at this point. We have worked very hard to try to come to middle ground with the county. We have reached out, we've not gotten the same level of, of outreach from that aspect of, from the county, and we still have made those efforts and outreaches to them to talk about how best to move forward for the best of the city residents as well as those residents in the county who are receiving water from us. I think we have made those efforts. At the end of the day, we are getting to a point that we are embroiled in legal as well as political controversy with our, with the system, but I think we have made every effort to do our due diligence when it comes to trying to work out a solution that's to the benefit of all customers. We have more work to do. This isn't a done deal. This is getting a process started. As of May 25, when those, when the bids come in, we still have the option to potentially stay the course that we are right now, but we do, I think, owe it to our customers to make every effort to look at what is the sustainable, long-term process for, for the system. And the way that we are right now and the possibility of the county coming in arbitrarily setting our rates for us is not sustainable. We will not be able to sustain the great water system that we've had for over 60 years with the county coming in and setting the rates for us. We will not be able to do the level of maintenance that we have been doing over the years. We will not be able to do those type of things, and I think this begins the process. The county has an opportunity. Yes, it, it would potentially be the, the best way to go forward if there were an opportunity to, for the county to, to talk with us seriously about the possibility of merging the systems, but that's not happened. So I'm moving, I support this as we're moving forward with looking at the, the process as of May 25. And as ultimate decision is with our citizens. The county, the council as well as whomever, if we make that decision to go with it, will have to make the case to the public to ultimately, who will make the final decision of what will happen with our water system. We begin the process, but the ultimate decision is, are the citizens of the City of Falls Church.
Thank you, Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Kaylin?
Thank you, Gay. More to, to specific points. Again, I understand everyone is speaking here with deep conviction and, and deep belief in what they're saying. A number of people said, we know you feel like you have your backs against the wall, but the fact is, we do have our backs against the wall. Perhaps I could be, my memory refreshed about the city manager, in the conversations that we did have, or written conversations, there was some talk about what Fairfax might be willing to do in terms of a merger. What was the, if I, if you could help us, what was the dollar amount that they were prepared to provide as some sort of settlement or merging process with, with Falls Church The new path, I think it was called?
Well, it was referred to as a merger, and there was no price.
No price. But what was, what were you, were you going to get in return for the merger?
In the, in Fairfax Water's response to the request for expressions of interest, they put forward the idea of a merger with, with basically no, no, no purchase of the system, but a merger of the system and the city would provide a, one member on the board, the 10-member voting board for the Fairfax Water organization going forward.
So that was their idea of leading us part of the way?
There's no discussion of that. What I would say is that, that throughout the past many years on these issues, there's, there have been repeated efforts to engage in a constructive way with the county, and that has, for many reasons, but unfortunately, it's not happened. And, but I do, can testify that the city has made efforts in that, in that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaylin, or anything else?
I have to go.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? I just wanted to make a few comments as well. The council was well-laid out, I think, or the seriousness by which we take this entire issue and the seriousness that we consider all of your comments this evening. I'm going to vote for the, the action because I believe that it's essential to preserve all of our options, and because I'm hoping that it will produce what years of confrontation, if you will, litigation have failed to produce, which is a legitimate offer from Fairfax County if they want to acquire our system. I recall one of the slides up there, for those who, who talk about private utilities necessarily having higher rates, I recall, I think it was Slide 11 that listed the different rates, and in fact, one of the private water systems was far less than some of the public systems. So I don't think you can arrive at a conclusion necessarily on rates from that standpoint. Secondly, as I have, have looked at this, we, and, and no one has, has had longer association with this system on council than I have. I've been out with our crews when they've been repairing the pipes during winter weather, when no one else would ever be out, let alone working below ground to repair a water pipe. I was involved in the decision that provided the auxiliary power that meant that our water system didn't lose power during Hurricane Isabel when the adjoining water systems did. This city council, the staff, especially our water system staff, have done everything humanly possible to provide safe and reliable water. And our reward for that, litigation, confrontation, and now potential confiscation. Now, I want to put all that aside, and here's a personal plea on the record to Chairman Bolova. Chairman Bolova, you have the capability of working with us to end this confrontation, to maintain this system in the public, to give the city fair value for its investment and the risk that it has run, and indeed, we have run significant risk in maintaining this system. Our doors are open. We have a wide-open and receptive line of communication. So Chairman Bolova, I'm asking you on the record before the camera, it's now your opportunity to come forward and make a legitimate offer, to meet us halfway, to recognize the value that we have put in on behalf not only of our citizens, but of the citizens in Fairfax County that we've served. So I'm going to vote for this tonight in the hopes that it will lead to some sort of an accommodation. I want to leave people with just three numbers. The first number is the low fair market value was what, 44 million? The higher fair market value was 53 million. The cost to replace our system to our users would be $300 million. The best approach here, I believe, in everyone's interest, is for the county to come forward with a legitimate offer, which we will gladly entertain, and if it meets our minimum requirements, will be very seriously considered. That's all I have to say tonight. Does anyone else have anything to say? All right. Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. City Attorney, is there anything else we need to do before we take this vote?
No.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on the motion before us?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaylin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Next item, and by the way, that item passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, business not on the agenda, we have nothing else there. I want to thank again everyone who came this evening. Business not on the agenda, nothing there. Councilmember comments and requests? Yes. Any comments? Yes, Councilmember Webb?
Just a quick comment. I would like to, to thank the citizens of the City of Falls Church for the opportunity of serving them over the last four years and look forward to the next several months that I will be on the council. Looking forward to the continuation of my services to this community that I have grown to love and have called home for the last almost eight years now. And I will tell you all right now, Lawrence Webb is still going to be active and involved in this community, and 18 months is not that far away. And on another note, and on another note, I'd like to wish my partner, Clifton, a very happy birthday tonight. I'm sorry, I can't be there with you enjoying a dinner somewhere, but I'll make it up to you at some point soon. I'm, I'm going to have a lot of free Monday nights, a lot of free Monday nights coming up fairly soon. So thank you all very much.
Councilmember Webb, the one point that I disagree with you with is 18 months seems like a long way away. Anyway, Councilmember Barry?
Nothing quite that dramatic and, and heartfelt, but I just wanted to say that this weekend I participated in the Bike DC event, and I was joined by many Falls Church residents as we cycled, oh my gosh, up and down Rock Creek Parkway, up and down the George, the GW Parkway. It was a wonderful opportunity. We started here from Falls Church, and there was a number of folks who were on the bike path with us at 6:30 in the morning. Lots of room on the bike path at 6:30 in the morning, I might add, Sunday morning. It was a great opportunity to work, I think cooperatively with all, all transportation methodologies and just a, just a marvelous event, and thanks to all the Falls Church citizens who turned out and participated.
Thank you. Other members of council? I just had a few very quick comments. We'll have lots of opportunities to celebrate, I think, in the future, our school's national ranking, which was absolutely fabulous, and we will recognize that hopefully more formally. And certainly, the greatest amount of, of appreciation goes to all those who were directly part of our school community. Councilmember Pepe especially, having been a former chairman of the school board. All the present and current school board members and the staff all deserve just, just an incredible round of applause for, from us, and I hope they'll get it. But I want to make one other comment as well. The entire community, I think, should celebrate this. All the taxpayers or businesses and families have been willing to pay over the years to support the schools. It proves that dedication, hard work, and a willingness to pay for what government does, does in fact pay off. We've known that it's paid off for our students all the time, those of us who have had kids in the system or do have kids in the system. We've known that. But now to get national recognition of that is just absolutely fabulous. And I do want to thank, among the others, all of city staff as well, our other elected officials. This has really been a community effort in the true sense of the word, and hopefully there'll be an appropriate community celebration. So it's a wonderful thing. I also wanted to recognize and thank the Falls Church Education Foundation. Councilmember Barry and I were there, and two elected councilmember elects, councilmember elect Duncan and councilmember elect Tarter were, were both there. Our commissioner of revenue, Tom Clinton. It was a great event. I want to thank everybody involved. It's, it's again, an example of how wonderful this community is. Also, the Falls Church Chamber event, which occurred a couple of weeks ago, another just wonderful community outpouring. So again, I, I think this community is just, just the most wonderful place to be and the most incredible opportunity as a public official to represent it. So thanks to everyone. Any other comments from, from council? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes of previous meetings. We're going to run through these very quickly, so if anyone has any amendments, please make them. And entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 23, 2012.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to approve the minutes as presented, April 23, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That minutes are approved. I want to double-check, Mr. City Attorney, we can do this by roll call vote, or we can do it by voice vote, right? Approval meant, just wanted to make sure. A motion on the March 22, 2010 minutes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have, I'd like to approve the minutes. Mr. Vice Mayor, I have, I'd like to approve the minutes with an amendment, or just with a question. May I ask that question?
Yes.
Okay. On line three, I was not at this meeting, I, so maybe it's inappropriate for me to even ask this question, but on line 316 and 317, it said, "The city attorney responded that the parking would not only be for the Wildon but for other purposes. He explained the only possible nexus to the Wildon." Mr. Baruch then explained his concern that the loan agreement. What does that sentence mean? "He explained the only possible nexus to the Wildon." Nexus between what and what?
Ms. Barry, I think this is a couple of years old, and I would have to, I think, go back and probably watch the videotape. I'm just not prepared to answer that question sitting here this evening. If it is a concern...
It's not going to hold up. It works.
Well, let me, point of order procedurally, why are we voting on minutes from before we were on the council? I don't understand how that's appropriate.
The minutes have to be approved. I would ask the city attorney how you approve minutes from prior council.
Well, as I understand it, there's nothing in Robert's rules that precludes a member of a public body from voting to approve minutes, even if that member of the body was not at the meeting or even on the body at the time. And nevertheless, if a particular member is not comfortable voting on a set of minutes, they are free to abstain from the vote.
I would, I'm not interested in abstaining. I don't want to, you know, slow down the wheels of justice. I just didn't understand what that sentence meant, so, and if you can't explain it, that's okay. It's, I don't think it's...
Councilmember Barry, do you wish then to pull that set of minutes off?
No, absolutely not. I'm happy to move to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Next item, June 28, 2010 minutes. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve the June 28 minutes.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, the July 26, 2010 minutes. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, there's a problem here. The title is the approval of the June 26, 2010, and it in fact is July 26, 2010. You see, in the... Okay, so it is correct that it's July 26, 2010. I'm ready to go.
Yeah, it's good.
So down there, that's fine. Okay. Okay?
You ready?
Okay.
And then one correction on line 15. It's, wasn't Vice Mayor, so that's the only other correction there.
Vice Mayor Webb? Congratulations.
Gave me a promotion, but hadn't earned it that bad.
Thanks very much. Any questions or comments on that one? Okay, entertain a motion for approval of the July 26, 2010 minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes are all approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is adjourned. Entertain a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.